Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of November 14, 2017. I'd like to thank the front office staff at City Hall for supplying the floral arrangements. Thank you very much, Vicki. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barra.
Here.
Mayor Ruwain.
Here. Chris Gonzalez, please, in the pledge, please.
................................................
We have a few announcements this evening. There will be no city council meeting on December 26, 2017. And in conjunction with the San Bruno Park School District, the City of San Bruno collected donations of clothing, food, and school supplies for the victims of the North Bay fires. The donation drive was a success, and the City of San Bruno thanks the San Bruno community for its outpouring of generosity. So, thank you all very much. Presentations this evening, we don't have any specific presentations. Review of the agenda, I'd like to move the report of the Park and Recreation Commission to right after item number eight, public hearings. There's no issues with that. Approval of amendments of the special and regular city council meetings of October 24, 2017, and the errors, corrections, or omissions. Seeing none to be approved as submitted. The consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented early or council action and may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on consent? Marty?
Please pull 7D.
D as in delta?
D as in delta.
Okay. Anything else?
If not, move to approve the remainder of consent.
Second.
Motion, second, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Item 10D, 7D, is adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of cable television equipment in the amount of $144,600 for improvements to the residential modem internet service. Marty?
Thank you. So, I pulled this item because it's important that as we continue to invest in our cable systems, our director was advised that I was going to be pulling this, so it's an opportunity to get an update on our fiber installation and how that may be rolling out hopefully in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. San Bruno Cable has completed the Shelter Creek Project, as you're well aware, fiber-to-the-home project, and we have been given the approval by the city council to move on to Peninsula Place and Crystal Springs, highly dense facilities for fiber-to-the-home service. We've begun the underground work at Peninsula Place and will be moving to Crystal Springs within two weeks to do the underground work, to begin the underground work there. And then we'll be connecting customers in about three weeks at Peninsula Place and bouncing back and forth as we get the project done. And that project is expected to take three to four months to complete. We're trying to expedite it and get it done as long as the weather holds out for some of the exterior work. There has been interest with the council to do a citywide fiber-to-the-home project. We're well aware of that. We've been looking at that opportunity. We have looked at the costs for that. I think the council is aware of what the cost might be to do a citywide project in the form of about $10 million. And so, to be prudent, we are engaging, or we plan to engage, a financial analyst to look at the cable system and our financials and make sure that we're making a prudent decision to recommend that to the council. So, that we expect to do.
So, thank you for tuning to me. So, we have two parts to this. One is the financial analysis that the city council has talked about previously. We're in the process of entering a contract under my expenditure authority to do just that. We anticipate that that work can be completed, if I remember correctly, by the end of January. And anticipate having a presentation to the city council on the results of that so that you can, as the director indicated, provide informed additional direction with respect to fiber-to-the-home rollout. In the meantime, staff in the cable department is also working, putting the finishing touches on their recommended strategic deployment approach so that we could discuss with you at generally the same time period. If we find our financial and operational way clear to move more deliberately forward, we'll be able to provide you with a game plan operationally and logistically for how and where to do that. So, that's the timeline. That's the general game plan.
And this approval of the equipment, what is that actually going to do for us to understand that are not in that world and expertise?
So, essentially, all our channels on the cable television system take up space. They take up frequency and bandwidth on our network. Trying to explain it as simply as I can here. And then, some of that is dedicated just to internet. So, about eight analog channels are dedicated just to the internet service. So, what we're going to do is we're going to compress some of the HD channels that we have, and by compressing that, we're going to free up some more channel space that we can dedicate to internet service. And by doing that, we're essentially going to double the bandwidth available to all residents. By doing that process, we can double the bandwidth available to all residents where their modems can attach to different channels to get service. And it's a benefit for all modem residential service and business service with the modem. Fiber optic folks already have enough bandwidth. That's not the issue there. But anybody with a residential modem would see a more consistent speed product, and that's why we're doing that. And then, we will be coming back again, hopefully in the first quarter, to talk about fiber-to-the-home for the city.
Okay. Any action on 7D?
Move to approve item 7D on consent.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item 7D on consent. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Item number eight, public hearings. There aren't any public hearings this evening. We'll get right on to item number 11, which is our annual report from the Parks and Recreation Commission.
They're up here. That's not a good start, is it? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Palmer. I'm the current chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm here tonight to present the commission's annual report and to review our 2016-2017 work plan. Slide number two shows the commission members for 2016-2017. That's an excellent picture, by the way. I don't know if you get that here, but that's quite a handsome group. And some of my fellow commissioners are here this evening, with the council's permission. I'd like to take just a brief second and introduce them. Commission member Chris Gonzalez. Commissioner Alex Melendez. Commissioner Lucy Zamatea. Commissioner Lori Greenberg. And vice chair Laura Davis. So, the student representative, the student representative position for the commission is currently vacant. This report will cover the commission's work over the 2016-2017 fiscal year. So, slide three, the purpose of the Parks and Recreation Commission is to make recommendations to the city council regarding community recreation needs. And these could include input on recreational activities, input on the various classes and programs offered by the rec. department, input on the use of recreational facilities and equipment, and input on the operation, supervision, and maintenance of playgrounds, athletic fields, the community swimming pool, indoor recreation facilities, auditoriums, and other facilities designated for recreational use with the exception of the senior center. As you know, the senior center has its own advisory board. Slide four details the Park and Recreation Commission's accomplishments for 2016-17. These will be shown in a little more detail as we move through the presentation, but to give everyone an overview, the Parks and Recreation Commission finalized the construction design, for the construction of the new Florida Avenue Park, finalized the construction design for the construction of the new Earl Glenview Park, initiated the pilot program to allow dogs on leashes in some parks, discussed and held a community meeting to initiate the process for making improvements to the Commodore Park Dog Run, assisted with the development and design of the two new restroom facilities for San Bruno City Park, began the process for needed improvements to some of the pathways in various parks, reviewed and recommended new registration and facility reservation software, and finally, the Parks and Recreation Commission presented the annual community recognition award. So, I'm going to talk about slides five and six, and Carrie can move between them because the Parks and Rec., with the council's permission, I'd like to discuss them at the same time. It's because the process that the Parks and Recreation Commission followed for both parks was very similar. The commission assisted with the planning, the development, and the final approval of the construction plans for both of the new parks, one to be located at Florida and Taylor Avenues and the other park at Earl/Claremont and Glenview Avenues. In addition to the discussions that took place at the regular Parks and Recreation Commission meetings, I wanted to acknowledge the two subcommittees that also took part in the community meetings for both of these parks. Commissioners Davis Zamatea and Greenberg were at the community meetings for the Earl Glenview Park, and Commissioners Melendez and Salazar, who's not here this evening, attended the community meetings for the Florida Avenue Park. And if any, if the council attended any of them, you know that those were long discussions. And I think that their presence was a huge benefit. While at these meetings, the commissioners observed the process, gathered input, and got a feel for the types of amenities that the local communities wanted to see in the new park. Both subcommittees then made oral reports at each commission meeting that took place after one of the community meetings. The information that the subcommittees brought back to the commission was vital to the decisions that the commission then made in regards to each of these projects. Slide seven shows the pilot program to allow dogs on leashes in some of the city's parks. This slide shows some of the pictures of the pilot program to allow dogs on leashes in some parks in San Bruno. The commission helped to develop and then initiate this pilot program, which took place from April 24 to October 23, 24. Close enough. San Bruno City Park and Grundy Park were the locations that were selected to conduct the pilot program. And I believe later on tonight, the council will be receiving a staff report on the pilot Slide eight talks about the Commodore Park Dog Run enhancements, and this slide shows the dog run as it is today. The Parks and Recreation Commission began discussions on some of the enhancements that could be made at the current facility. The commission decided to host a community meeting on the subject and advertise this meeting so that any of the stakeholders could attend. The community meeting took place immediately following the regular Parks and Recreation Commission meeting of September 20. The commission will again be discussing the dog run at its combined November-December meeting on Wednesday, December 6. And I just wanted to add that I got a lot of positive vibes out of that community meeting that we hosted. I thought it was a good idea. Slide nine is the city's City Park Restroom Replacement Project. The commission held discussions over several meetings to review and approve the current City Park restroom replacement project. This project involves the demolition and replacement of the restroom building located behind Tom Lehrer Field and also the restroom building located near Diamond 3 in the upper park area. Currently, both of these projects have yet to begin, and we remain hopeful that they will be finished in the spring of 2018. Slide 10 is the park pathway restoration work. This slide shows a couple of pictures of the newly refinished pathway in the lower portion of San Bruno City Park. This project was scheduled for completion in two phases. The first phase involved all the pathways, as I said, in the lower portion of the park, and these have been finished. The city's contractor began the second phase of the project, which is the upper portion of the pathways, on Tuesday, November 7. They are currently patching and paving during this week, weather permitting. To complete the work, the contractor will apply a slurry coat to seal the pathway, and that'll either be November 14 or November 21. Yeah. Yeah. So, next week, hopefully, depending on weather. Slide 11 is the new registration and facilities reservation software program. The Parks and Recreation Commission received several different reports and subsequent updates on new software to be used by staff at the recreation department. The old software program was expensive to access and not user-friendly for the community. The new software, called Civic Plus, is more cost-effective and allows the community users to register from home, work, et cetera, for no additional cost. And from what we hear, the staff really likes it. Slide 12 is the presentation of our annual community recognition award. Missure, the commission awarded the community award to Lorenzo Hockaday. Lorenzo is a worthy recipient of this honor for a lot of reasons, but mostly because of his commitment to the development of young people through sports and positive coaching. He has coached basketball, flag football, and kickball on every level from second grade through high school. He teaches all of his players the three As, which signify academics, attitude, and ability. Lorenzo is very generous with his time, and you'll often find him volunteering with a multitude of local organizations, including the BASO Lions Club, St. Roberts Club Basketball Teams, and the San Bruno Special Needs Program. The commission was very happy and proud to be able to present this honor to Lorenzo. It was well deserved. And finally, slide 13 shows the goals for 2017-18. And this work plan includes the dedication of the new Earl Glenview Park, the dedication of the new Florida Avenue Park. The commission will support community engagement and the master plan design process of the new Recreation and Aquatic Center, continue on updating the Parks and Recreation Commission Parks Inspection Program so that all of the city's parks are inspected at least once annually, complete the park pathway improvements within the funding that is available for both Commodore Park and Grundy Park, continue to discuss and then commence enhancements to the Commodore Park Dog Run, and implement any city council policy changes to existing city policy regulating dogs being allowed in parks. So, this concludes the Park and Recreation's annual report to the city council for 2016-2017. Thank you for your time. Be more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have for me tonight.
Good. I just want to say, on behalf of the city council, as I say to all the boards and commissions and committees, that really you are the foundation of what happens in this city. All of these hours, thousands upon thousands of hours, on all of our commissions, boards, and committees are volunteer hours, and you put in an awful lot of time, especially this time, Park and Rec., because of all of the two new parks we were having in our city, which is, you know, a real rarity in a community lately. So, you put in an awful lot of hours, and I want to let you know how much we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number nine, public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council on a public comment? Oh, I guess we have a couple cards here.
Good evening, everyone. We're here actually for the, my daughter wanted to speak on a later item, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to let you know that we're relative newcomers to the city. We moved in about a little over a year ago. And I just wanted to convey to you, if you don't already know it, what incredible staff you have. When we first moved in, we had some issues involving the sellers and things that were or not done, and your building department was fantastic, your water department was responsive, the people on the front desk were intuitive, responsive, kind. The casual interaction I've had with the police department has been great. So, I just want you to know that as a newcomer to the city, we so appreciate the interactions we've had with your staff, and they are an incredible bunch. So, I just want to say thank you to them and to you for your stewardship of the city.
Well, I want to thank you very, very much. That's great.
And welcome.
Yes, welcome. Welcome to our city. This is on tape. This will be archived, believe me. Thank you very much. And your daughter's going to speak on 10A. Is that correct? Okay, good. Anything else on a public comment? Okay. Conduct of Business. Our first item is 10A, receive a report and provide direction regarding the results of the pilot program allowing on-leash dogs on park pathways in City Park and Grundy Park. Carrie?
So, I think this may be the last time I'm going to get to say this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. To Mayor Ruwain.
I'll be here on the 28th.
But I'm not, I don't have anything scheduled that evening.
Oh, okay.
We can put you on the agenda for something.
I was actually going to line all of you up. But that's fine. Thank you.
So, on to the dog pilot program. As a result of community interest and concern, earlier this year, the city council requested the Parks and Recreation Commission's input on how to address the frequent presence of both on- and off-leash dogs in city parks. As distinguished from other San Mateo County cities who all allow on-leash dogs in some or all of their parks, San Bruno prohibits all animals except service animals, whether on or off-leash, from entering our parks. After receiving the Parks and Recreation Commission's input and considering the matter at two separate meetings, the city council directed staff to implement a six-month pilot program allowing on-leash dogs on pathways only in City Park and Grundy Park. No other city parks were included in the pilot program. The purpose of this report is to provide the city council with the results and receive direction regarding the six-month pilot program. As the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission mentioned, from April 24 through October 23 of this year, on-leash dogs were permitted on paved pathways in City Park and Grundy Park. Signs announcing the pilot program and waste-bag kiosks were installed in these parks at the entrances and throughout the parks. The program was publicized on the city's website, community services department e-newsletter, San Bruno Cable, police department social media sites, email blast to recreation program patrons, and Nextdoor. Through this outreach, park visitors were invited to contact the community services department with input on the pilot program or the police department regarding violations. Over the six-month period, the police department completed approximately 121 passing checks and walkthroughs of City Park and Grundy Park, distributed approximately 500 information leaflets. They gave approximately 45 warnings to people for off-leash dog violations, with the majority of the warnings occurring in the first several weeks of the pilot program. Of these 45 warnings, 15 were issued at City Park and the remaining 30 at Grundy Park. During the pilot program, no citations were issued by the police department, and there were no calls for service related to dog bites, attacks, or similar safety incidents at either park. The police department did receive two complaint calls for off-leash dogs at Grundy Park. One of the guardians received a verbal warning, and the other was no longer in the park when the police department arrived. The police department has concluded that the pilot program did not create a public safety concern or significant public nuisance, and that responding to off-leash dog violations on a complaint basis would not create a significant additional burden on its resources. Similarly, the Parks Maintenance Division did not experience an increase in maintenance activity as a result of the pilot, and I'll leave to your imagination what maintenance activity might have meant. During the six-month pilot program, the community services department received community input on nine occasions. On four occasions, the citizen expressed support for the pilot program. On five occasions, the citizen did not want dogs either on or off-leash in any city park. Should the city council wish to implement the pilot program by allowing on-leash dogs on pathways while still restricting dogs on turf areas, the pilot program could be expanded to include Commodore Park and Pacific Heights Park, both with pathways much like City Park and Grundy Park. Doing so would require a change to the rules governing dogs in city parks by amending the municipal code through the adoption of an ordinance. Signage announcing the park rules would be changed, and waste-bag kiosks would be installed at these two additional parks. For a park the size of Commodore Park, we anticipate this cost would be approximately $2,500. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer your questions. I would like just to mention one clarifying point. I think Chair Palmer mentioned that the commission would be discussing the Commodore Park Dog Run at its combined November-December meeting, and I think that the chair and I in a discussion earlier decided maybe it would be better to wait till the January meeting to give us ample time to prepare the presentation. So, in case anybody's watching, we wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Any questions for Carrie? Irene? No? Do you want to speak? Just tell us your name and your street.
My name is Maeve. I live on Parkview Drive, which is right up the road from San Bruno City Park. I'm about 12 years old, but I'm going to be older in May. I just moved here, like Mom said, about a year ago with my mother and my two rescue dogs, which, you know, both adorable. And I've found that we just got, our bigger rescue dog needs a lot of exercise, and finding out that we had this city park right there was so awesome to hear because we could just go down and walk them every single day. And, yeah, thank you. So, yeah.
So, I get you like the idea of walking dogs in city parks. Right. Right. Okay, good. Anyone else? No? Counsel?
Good job.
I think it's been very successful. I haven't heard any real complaints at all, and some positive things. So, it's good. My feeling is bring back the ordinance. Anyone else? Ken?
It was interesting because the pilot program actually started, I believe, within a week of Relay for Life. And so, it was in the park for a while that weekend, and I joked around with a few of the dog walkers, and I go, feels pretty good to be legal now, doesn't it?
You too, right.
And they felt, they just felt good. I mean, people walk in their dogs, you know, with leashes and no matter what size, they all just felt good, you know? It was a good time that they were having. And I just can't believe that, you know, what, can't imagine what they were doing previously to that, you know? It's, you know, we didn't have dogs running rampant throughout the park, but just a lot more activity once the pilot program started. So, it's, I think, for the most part, and, you know, paying attention, silently paying attention to the discussions on Nextdoor, there are, a majority of the, our residents are responsible, and they're taking the attitude that if you want to keep things the way they are with the, you know, with the dogs in the park on leashes, then they too need to at least speak out to those that are not complying, you know, with the guidelines. So, I think there is a general attitude that this is good, this is a good thing, and that we'll do everything they can to make sure that everyone they see also complies. I do have a concern about maybe not doing it throughout the city because when you mentioned Grundy, oh, not Grundy, but Commodore, you have such a large play area there along with the dog run. So, I'm not really sure how that's going to be with kids right there so prominently on the corner in that big play area and then, you know, dogs all around, either walking through or around that area. So, I'll leave that to the Park and Rec. Commission and take that all into consideration. But, and thank the Park and Rec. Commission for finally, you know, making the suggestion and then implementing it. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Irene?
Oh, thank you. I was just going to say the same thing you did and have, would like the recommendation from the Park and Rec. Commission about which parks. I know the City Park is probably top on everyone's list, and that seems to be I know the City Park is probably top on everyone's list, and that seems to be such a well-populated park that people don't take advantage and let their dogs loose too often, though I've seen them occasionally. I too have been listening to Nextdoor and reading about it, and people have been self-monitoring and self-educating, and I would hope that we would keep doing that ourselves, that if we see, if our staff members see people out there letting their dogs run around, that that's not acceptable. So, it's still my concern that, you know, dogs fight because it'd get territorial, and dogs poop everywhere, and dogs, you know, run after children who are running. So I would hope that people take to heart that those things happen and that they would keep their dogs on the leash.
Marty?
I'm a big proponent of having dogs in our parks on leashes and having responsible guardians making sure that they're being cleaned up after and are behaving properly. I'm waiting to hear back on how we can expand this program to all the pathways. The one question I would have for staff, do we have the budget available to do the repaving for Commodore and for, there was one more, I'm sorry.
Pacific Heights.
Pacific Heights.
So we have, the Council may recall that in the fiscal year 1617 budget, in the capital improvement program budget, you appropriated $75,000. There's a small surplus or carryover into fiscal year 1718, and there's a $50,000 appropriation in the current year's budget. We're putting the bid documents together, literally as we're speaking, so that during the rainy season, we can bid, and the Commodore Park will be the next park to have the pathways repaired and slurried. So we anticipate that we'll have about $60,000 to do that work. If it turns out that the bids allow us to pick up a small portion of Grundy, that will be the next park that we'll be seeking to address.
Riko?
I would agree with the Mayor to bring back, but I'd like to see it go to the Commission. I'd like to see it, we have the pathway trial basis, which seems to have been successful, but as you have in your staff report when you talk about Lamita Park on San Anselmo, it's extremely small, there is really no pathway, so is that best for a small area to have kids running in this grass area and the playground equipment and then have dogs as well? So I think we need to have a balance, as we have tried to do here, and it seems that people have been good stewards of trying to do the right thing and having this trial period be successful. But I'd like to see it go back to the Park and Recreation Commission to find each park, whether it is appropriate or not, and then bring back to Counsel for further review and action.
Okay. I agree, you have direction? Okay, thank you very much.
Through the Chair. I'd like to suggest that, and maybe to the Park and Rec Commission, that we look at putting on public announcements on cable and maybe doing even some little movie-type things about how do you take care of your dog when you're out there. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt.
Yes.
I just wanted to raise a timing issue, which has to do with the referral back to the Park and Recreation Commission, but then also the timing of bringing back an ordinance for introduction to all of you. So if an ordinance were to be brought back, we could bring it back on the 28th, which is your next regular meeting, but then it couldn't be adopted until January, and it wouldn't go into effect until February. So I guess the question I have for the Counsel is, does the Counsel wish to see an ordinance before the Park and Rec Commission acts and provides direction on which parks? And then if not, is the Counsel interested in extending the pilot program until such time as an ordinance is brought back?
I think I would be in favor of extending the existing pilot program until an ordinance is brought back for the remainder of the parks.
I agree with the Mayor.
I agree as well.
Very good. Perhaps somebody could just make a motion for the record to do that, so we'll have it on record.
Mr. Vice President? So moved, with the man's in.
Second.
So motion is second, only question, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Great. And thank you, Maeve.
Thank you.
Item 10B, you received first quarter financial update report as of September 30th, 2017, and adopted a resolution amending the 1718 operating capital improvement budget, approving carryover 1617 purchase order encumbrances and other first quarter budget amendments. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to review the first quarter financial update as of September 30th. I would also like to review with the Counsel two, or several budget amendment items, and also to discuss several budget-related items that I think are useful information for the City Council. The adopted budget incorporates the estimated revenues and planned expenditures for all funds for city operations and the capital improvement program. This first quarter update contains really only limited data through three months, and because of the nonlinear nature of various revenues and expenditures, while one would assume generally 25% of revenue is received and 25% of expenditures, in the grand scheme, that's generally true, but in some revenue categories and expenditure categories, there could be a variance. So what I'd like to do is review with the City Council just some very summary information and to discuss various variances so that the Counsel is well-aware of the first quarter activity. So total general fund revenues are projected to equal $43,600,000. With expenditures, you'll see on the next page, the bottom line, of $45,200, a difference of $1.6 million. The large variance between revenues and expenditures for this year really centers on the one-time and ongoing enhancements that the City Council approved on the expenditure side for 1718, and that again explains the difference between the revenue and expenditure amounts. In looking at the city's major revenues, you see that property tax and sales tax is about $16,000, $17,000, which is together nearly half of the total general fund revenues of $43 million. For this chart and for your report, the property tax line item includes what is generally secured property tax, but also includes property transfer tax revenues that are a relatively small portion of the total, but those two items are included in property tax. The percent of budget is zero, and again, the Counsel is well-aware that property tax revenue almost exclusively comes to the city in December and in April when the county remits property taxes that are paid in those two months. Again, we'll just point out for the Counsel, and this was discussed in the budget meetings, of the $9 million, just under $2 million of property tax in 1718 is coming in and is really property tax that is offsetting tax increment that the redevelopment agency used to receive. So there is a fair amount of that total does accrue what the redevelopment agency was receiving before. Sales tax revenue is budgeted at $7.6 million. This is $191,000 more than in 1617. Again, it's very early to have a trend line. The Finance Department did have an opportunity to meet with Muni Services, our sales tax consulting firm, and based on their knowledge, and they're looking at the financial trends over the first three months. They expressed high confidence that the city will in fact receive very close to the budgeted amount in sales tax. On the expenditure side, oh, I just go back for, well, I was just going to mention on the departmental revenues, departmental revenues are up $167,000 compared to 1617, and in particular in the police, fire, and building departments, revenue is up in those three departments. On the expenditure side, was just going to point out again, at the bottom in the first column is the $45,200,000 showing as total expenditures. The percent is 26 million, I'm sorry, 26% was spent in the first quarter of 1718 compared to 25% last year. I did want to point out, in staff's continuing efforts to reduce expenditures to the lowest level possible, we have an obligation of about a little less than $4 million that we pay to CalPERS for the employer unfunded crude liability. This is typically a monthly payment that we pay to PERS. This year, for the miscellaneous employees, we prepaid that expense this year. PERS is charging a 7% interest over the course of the year, and by prepaying, we were able to save about $144,000. So it's a significant amount, but that was something that we didn't have the opportunity to, we did it on the safety side last year. This year, we had an opportunity to do it on the miscellaneous side also, so we took advantage of those savings. On the enterprise accounts, revenues are up, except for stormwater, which again, we receive stormwater revenue as part of our property tax, so we have not received anything yet, we will next month in December. But revenues for water, wastewater, and cable are all running ahead of last year, and again, that's reflecting rate increases that the City Council approved. In the internal service funds, no specific comment, I would just say, under the self-insurance fund, expenditures are substantially lower in 1718, and that is just a timing anomaly. Our property and liability premiums that we pay to A-BAG, that more typically are paid in the first quarter of the year, were not paid until October 26th, so they have been paid, but they're outside of this timeframe, so we are really very close to the budget Those are the general comments that I wanted to make about the financial report. You do have a resolution related to budget amendment, and you have on the dais an updated resolution. Really wanted to improve the presentation of the resolution, and so there's two columns to show incoming revenues and outgoing expenditures in two separate columns. So we have done that. There was actually, you'll, just a full disclosure of the differences, there was an item on the original resolution that was asking the Counsel to appropriate funds for a fire station that we've removed for now, depending on Counsel direction. If the Counsel wants us to do that, we can, but in the resolution update I gave you, that has been removed. And the only other change to the resolution is to make more clear, within the resolution itself, the carryover amounts for a variety of purchase orders. So for the carryover purchase orders, this is again, when the city issues a purchase order, there is an encumbrance established, and those encumbrances run out technically as of June 30th, but there are still purchase orders that if, for a fire truck, it might take a 10-month delivery period if the purchase order is outstanding on June 30th, and those funds haven't been paid yet. We put into the resolution the City Council re-appropriating that money from, in this instance, the 1617 year into the 1718 year to pay those encumbrances once that actual payment is made. So it's a, these are all approved amounts by the City Council in 1617, and just getting Counsel authorization to carry those over into 1718 for payments to be made. If there's any, there's a detailed listing of all of the purchase orders in your agenda packet. It is just summarized in the resolution, but there's a detailed listing in the packet. If the Counsel has any specific question, would be glad to answer those questions. Also in the resolution, as we do each quarter, there's a recap of other budget changes. Virtually all of the changes have previously been approved by the Counsel over the course of the quarter. I did point out in the staff report, and would also, would just point out here at the meeting, two of the budget amendment items were in fact not previously reviewed, and so I wanted to point those out. There, one of those is finance erroneously misunderstood direction in the budget process, and included in the budget, a change in one of the positions in the wastewater, changing the position from a pump mechanic to a maintenance worker. That was not the intent of the city manager and the proposed budget, and so we are asking the Counsel to reverse that item in the budget. It would be an additional cost of $26,000, so the budget reduced the appropriation by $26,000 for an incorrect position title, and so this would just restore the wastewater positions as they were in 1617. And the second item is to include in the accessible pedestrian ramp at various locations, project in the capital improvement budget, there is $288,000 carryover for ramps. During the City Council discussion, there was a direction to include $50,000 additional funds for additional ramps as part of that project, so that, I've included that in the resolution, again, depending the Counsel desiring that item to be included. So those are, that is the financial report, and that is the budget amendment items. There's, the city manager asked that I just review with the Counsel the current status of the capital improvement reserve fund, because there has been some changes to what was presented in the budget, and wanted to just present to the Counsel the current status of the capital improvement reserve and get direction from the Counsel if... of the capital improvement reserve, and get direction from the council if they would like some change made. In the slide and in the staff report, you see the capital improvement reserve. I just might mention that in, I would describe the capital improvement reserve as being a little bit different than some of the other reserves the city has established, because looking at the general fund reserve, for instance, 25% of operating expenditures, I believe that reserve is set up intended to have that reserve amount, except for some extraordinary amount, to always remain there as a rainy day fund. This reserve is a little bit different, to the extent, I don't believe there's an expectation that funds go into this reserve and then are held for indefinite periods of time for rainy day. In fact, this reserve is set up in order to fund capital projects, and so money goes into the reserve with the expectation, within some reasonable amount of time, the council is identifying projects and expenditures, in fact, take place. So what I wanted to point out is, if you look at the left column in the capital improvement reserve, you see a beginning balance of, for 1718, a beginning balance of $5.3 million and a projected ending balance of $2.1 million. And this was, that is what was in the budget, and that's, at that time, that's what we anticipated. But you can see the 1718 amended column and its estimated, because we're projecting, based on what we know today, an ending fund balance that would be negative of $240,000. And I would just like to walk through, just very briefly, some of the component parts of that. The beginning fund balance of $5.3 million was at that level because finance and putting it together, the budget, anticipated that there would be an infusion from general fund surplus, as there has been in the last several years, of $1 million. In past years, there's been infusion into this fund from between $1 and $3 million over the last couple of years, and finance anticipated $1 million going into the fund that would create this higher fund balance. With the council direction to use surplus from 1617 for $1.6 million in enhancements, did not allow or did not permit this million-dollar transfer to take place. So that is why the $5.3 million, in fact, turned out to be $4.3 million as a beginning fund balance. Then you see the revenues, and there were transfers in this year, $373,000. These are various capital projects that were completed, and there was approved budget remaining, that remained unspent, that the actual project expenditure was less than what was budgeted. And so, back to the capital reserve, $373,000 was put back into the fund. And then transfers out, including in the first quarter, we had projected that the transfers out would be $3.1 million, and in fact, the transfers out were $4.1 million. And these were both, as we closed the books and precise the expenditures as of June 30th, it was corrected a little bit, but even the bigger change was, in the first quarter and included in the budget amendment, you will see there are two capital projects that the council has taken almost $800,000 in the first quarter out of the reserve in order to fund the projects, one of them being the Florida Avenue Park, as an example, and the other is the Mills Park Neighborhood Streetlight Conversion. When the budget was put together, those being the prime examples, those projects were not anticipated, and so it results in the higher $4.1 million. There's sort of a note that's highlighted there. In addition, and it's a receivable to the cable fund, but there's $991,000 the council has directed to be lent to the cable fund while it doesn't actually reduce fund balance. It's something that's not spendable, so I wanted to just show it on the chart that that $991,000 is something that could not be spent. So looking at it in this way, the fund balance for the capital improvement reserve is a I would say there's not a requirement that the council act at this point to change that, but I think, and actually, there's an item on the agenda tonight that would transfer an additional amount, I believe $70,000, $70,000 or $80,000 additional from the reserve to a capital project. It would be staff's recommendation, though, that there are three projects that have taken money out of the capital reserve, and all related to the stormwater, to stormwater fund, and have been moved from the reserve to stormwater fund, and the public works director would recommend actually deferring these three projects. If the council agreed that that would be a good direction, we could transfer, if these projects were deferred, meaning, at this point, defunding those projects, and this would be the City Park Stormwater Improvement, the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin Improvement, and the Green Infrastructure Development Plan. If, in fact, these three projects were defunded, the adjusted fund balance for the reserve would change from being $240,000 negative to a positive million, $1,009,000 positive fund balance. So this would be a way to correct this deficit, and the council would have the opportunity at any time that it seemed appropriate to refund those projects, but that would be a recommended way to, in fact, adjust that, adjust that change. I have not included these three in the budget resolution. If the council directed that all three or any of those, in fact, be defunded, the recommendation would be that in the next quarter, we would actually do that if you gave us the direction, and when you act with the next budget amendment, that change could be made. The only other budget-related item that the, that wanted to address to the council is, again, the, during the budget, well, including, included in the budget were proposed major enhancement programs. If you recall, there were two programs for, a downtown enhancement program and a neighborhood enhancement program, that together, the funding was about $1.6 million to undertake both of those enhancement programs. They were presented to you as two separate programs for downtown enhancements. The council did have a discussion, and part of the discussion centered on, was there a way to adjust the enhancements down in order to lower the cost? Staff has reviewed the earlier recommendation and believes that the total cost, either individually or in components, or by individually or in total, could be reduced by about 30%. We have included in the packet the complete discussion of those enhancements, and again, I think there could be a 30% reduction in costs related to those two. So at this point, again, just since we're talking about budget and budget amendments and budget items, wanted to bring this back to your attention again, and staff is really just seeking the city council's interest or direction in further refining one or both of these, or just to get more direction from the council as far as what you would like us to do. And that concludes my comments, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim?
Through the chair.
Rico.
So, as you said, we usually have a bigger carryover in the general. This, I believe, is about $92,000-plus dollars that we have carryover. Is that correct? This time, we have about $92,000-plus dollars that's being carried over from the general fund that usually goes to the reserves. Am I correct?
I believe that's...
Okay. And as you alluded, we used to have a greater sum that would go, and these are projects that, would I agree, it's not for a rainy day, but it is to ongoing projects and activities that we need in this community. So the few questions I have is the three items that you listed as far as possibly holding off in order to redirect the funds back. They were brought up for a purpose, so what happens for the delay? What is the detriment to the community, to the neighborhood, to the area, the rising costs, potentially? Then, also, I'm looking further down the road, but when we start talking about the capital reserves, these are items that we should be putting monies toward, or having a funding source, shall we say, and that's only the allocation through the general fund, which that means we need to have more revenue. So, to me, this is something that's going to need to be addressed, because this is what is about our infrastructure. This is what it's about, and I mean infrastructure by facilities and other projects. So we're finding ourselves to a point that we really have to examine this, I think, closely. You talked about the $1.6 million that was brought up in a study session for possible enhancements or improvements. I believe the, if not, the majority unanimous council had said, that's probably a lot to bring on, and probably too costly, and to come back and have that reexamine. So I would say immediately, the different look at it of a 30% reduction or what have you, and I think the council was guiding toward that. But again, the project's being delayed, what does that do? And am I incorrect about, right now, the only way we're going to get more to the capital reserves is having a funding source, or having monies out of the general fund put aside for that? I asked you a lot, I know.
I would say everything you've said is generally true. I mean, I mean, the, I would say the capital, the capital reserve, by design and by reality, is sort of the funding source of last resort. I mean, and I think, from a budgetary point of view, for instance, the three projects that we're talking about are all devoted to stormwater. I mean, I think in the perfect world, the stormwater fund would pay for stormwater projects, you know, so, but the stormwater funding is very, very limited, and, you know, has really no ability to do substantial capital projects. So, to that extent, you know, I think, over-reliance on the general fund to do all sorts of things is, it's a nice-to-have when the general fund is able to do it, but on an ongoing basis, it's a challenge for the general fund to do that. I think the, you know, if you'd like to go through the three projects, I don't think I'm the person, I think the public works director would have to address, you know, the status or the thoughts around those three projects.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. In regards to the three projects, as the finance director mentioned, the green infrastructure plan, the plan is to be, is scheduled or needs to be completed by September of 2019, so we do have some flexibility in terms of completing the plan. In terms of the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin, that's one of the project that was identified in stormwater master plan. The city is actually looking and coordinating with CCAG right now to try to figure out whether Caltrans may be able to provide some fundings for that, because as their flows from Skyline Boulevard flows, you know, towards the storm drain system into the canyon basin, that's something that we're actually looking at, so we're thinking that the project can be deferred until further discussion with Caltrans, and see whether they can maybe contribute some of their money to, in order for us to get the plan established for the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin. In regards to the City Parkway, stormwater, stormwater, that's the channel that's there on City Parkway, and it's been there, I believe, for the longest time, and so I know there was an interest in trying to get that buried below grade, and the city had seeked consultant to design that as part of the Crystal Springs sewer replacement project, and the product, the design has been completed. It was about a $20,000, $25,000 design effort for the, to bury the channel below grade, but the cost for the construction of that is, it's quite expensive, and I think we had budgeted about $850,000 for that. $850,000 is what was budgeted for that, for that work. You know, that's one project that can possibly be deferred until further, you know, fundings are available in the stormwater funds in the future.
Irene?
Jimmy, before you sit down, thank you. Since we are undertaking redesigning and rebuilding or building a new swimming pool recreation center in that area, can't that, all the planning for that be folded into it, since we're going to have to be looking at parking and all the other kind, and traffic flow, and all sorts of other things? Might undergrounding the storm drain be part of that? Or at least be the concept as we go forward with the planning of everything else?
That is a possibility for us to look at. I know that we were concentrating within the rec center and the swimming pool area, but not, you know, beyond the extent of that footprint, but that's something that we can look into as well.
And it might be able to, you know, the funding for the recreation center and all of that might be half of it, and then we can do the other half, or some kind of combination. So that might be something that is actually better to wait and do that with the construction of the rec center. So that's just a thought that I had.
Marty?
Some budget stuff.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you for all the detail and all the things that you said. I think one of the things that always surprises me, and I've been doing this a long time, and I don't know why I never mentioned it before, when we do projects, and when we say, "Oh, this is great, let's do it," and the council approves it, and we go forward with it, one thing we don't do is say, okay, the money, we do say the money's coming from general fund reserve, what we don't do is say, the reserve fund is now, at this point, $2 million, $1 million, whatever it is, and if we do this particular project, it's going to take X amount away, and leave us with this. So I think throughout the year, we often seek out things to do and embrace doing them, and fund them through the general fund reserve, but maybe don't really realize what that is doing to the fund at that moment. So I'd like to suggest, going forward, that that'd be part of how we do our budget, and how we do the staff reports when we are spending general fund money, so we have a good grasp of what direction we're going in. So that's a suggestion. The other thing, kind of to fold into what Councilman Rico Medina was saying, is even if we defund these three projects, the other thing I think we should be looking at is, what is our priority with them? Do we just drop them totally, or do we say, well, the next time we have money, this is the next thing we are going to do? And maybe that's something that staff needs to help us with. Is it more important to do the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin, regardless if CCAG can get the money, or Caltrans can give us the money or not? But when we're looking at defunding things or funding them, what is the priority for them? And then, do we say, okay, it may take three years, so we'll set aside $100,000 a year for it? Or some kind of more... dollars a year for it," or some, some kind of more structured payment of these kinds of things? So, maybe you could come back, if that's a consensus of the council, to look at some kind of structure like that. Maybe you could come back with something, if that's.
Yeah. Yeah, I would just say that I, I think, you know, staff's recommendation was that the council takes specific action in the second budget amendment, second quarter budget amendment, and I would concur and say, as part of that action would be the priority that you're describing, so that when funds became available, it would be clear in advance which, which ones the, the priority would, would be. And as the director indicated, one of the projects does have a 2019 timeline. Well, that, that's not very far away, so, so I think the priority would be very, very helpful.
Yes, but, but also, in going forward in the future, keeping that kind of structure in mind for all our projects.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And on, on your comment regarding the staff report, I think it's an excellent idea, and finance can include that, or when, when the fiscal impact is reported, that'll be additional information that could be provided.
Marty?
So, we're facing the harsh reality of our Asian city. Our revenues were okay in the past. We were able to fund, starting in 2013, for everybody that doesn't have a copy of the report, this is when they first began the capital improvement reserve in 2013. And we've been drawing that down. And our revenues used to be able to spill over and fill that bucket up, but that's not happening anymore. We've had to deal with these unbudgeted, unforeseen expenses with our lights going out, right? That's part of where it came from, from a box covert that had to get fixed. These emergency funding mechanisms were important to have. Well, we're not going to have that without transferring this money in to, to fill in that bucket a fifth of what it used to be. And we're going to get other things down the road where things are going to break that it's not in our budget, but we need to find a way to pay for it. So, we're going to have to face the reality here really, really soon of how we're going to increase our revenues, and I think we're dancing around the subject just a little bit about how all these additional storm drain requirements are looming, that we have to treat stormwater to a really high standard. And if we fail to do that, we'll probably be sued like before. So, tonight, we don't have the time to go into all the things that we need to do. We have a, a new council coming in that is going to have to get ready to, to make some very tough choices. Tonight's choices are relatively easy. We need to defer some of the projects based on the recommendation from our director and staff. But we have to be mindful that, how are we going to deal with this? You know, our streets continually to be damaged with each storm and with the wear and tear. We're thirty million in unfunded, I believe, repairs that are needed to maintain, and maintain our roads in five years. We, we need another thirty million. I think that's, is that about right? So, where's this money going to come from? How, how are we going to do it? And we're going to need to increase our revenue, and so I'm in favor of, of how we're going to proceed with making this transfer, and, and it's, it's not good news, but it's reality. We have an old city. It's spread out, and those are my comments.
Ken?
Let me first say that, Mr. O'Leary, I know this is, even though this is probably the least interesting report that you give throughout the year, it's, it's.
I don't know about that.
Well, I mean, there's zero, there's zero property tax. I mean, he doesn't, I mean, we don't know, we can't gauge, you know, how good the city, how prosperous the city's going to be, is, is tax-wise. But come the next report, which unfortunately, I may have to sit in the audience.
I would like to point, point out that the vice mayor has never missed an opportunity to point out how boring this report is. So, thank you very much.
I mentioned that it's not as exciting as the report that you will be giving at the next, the next report, which I'll probably be sitting in the audience or watching comfortably at home. In, in reference to what my colleague just said, and it's, it's important to say that we've, the city has been through a lot in the last twenty years. And I'd just like to say that we are in the middle of some prosperous times, and we seem to make it, you know, in the last twenty years, we probably not had as many, as much prosperous times as, as non-prosperous times. We've had more challenges, but we've still managed to move forward and get things done and get things repaired and, plus take care of our staff. We hit rock bottom during the recession like many, many people did, many cities did. But, yes, we do, and this next council and future councils and after them will be dealing with those challenges that face each, each municipality, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's new regulations, whether it's something that we haven't even talked about yet. We find a way, and I'm confident that this council will find a way to, to move forward, whether it's stormwater, whether it's fiber, whether it's the remainder of the streetlights, and fixing our streets and our sidewalks. So, I think we've done the prudent thing. The, the, the challenge is staff, and I think staff, at least in my tenure, has done an exceptional job in cutting the pie, you know, the right way and allowing us to, to, to make those, those improvements without leaving one big chunk behind. Unfortunately, now we have stormwater, which we're only getting sense, you know, on, on each property. We need a big, we, we need a big infusion, and that's going to be the challenge of the future, the future council.
The only thing I wanted to say, Mr. O'Leary, you've been here a while, is when I came in, in oh-five, oh-six, in the other reserve funds, they were very nominal. And I think this council from then, with my two colleagues who will be leaving, and former mayor Franzella and a council member, then Vice Mayor Salazar, took prudent action to increase those, those reserve funds that we have not seen before and other cities do not have. So, there's this one that we're dealing with, which is more of a day-to-day operational usage, but also to highlight that the other reserves, and you can correct me, where they were and where they are is night and day. And the councils have taken prudent action to ensure that they have those funds available. Won't cure everything, but when we do have a, a, something that occurs in the town that may be of, of a nature that needs immediate funds, we have some of those available, which, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but I know oh-five, oh-six, opposed to where they are today, is, is night and day. And we actually have a reserve policy and guidelines and standards which we did not have before.
Anything else? Mr. O'Leary, thank you very much for your very thorough and concise.
Exciting.
No, it is.
Exciting for him.
Might not be, might not be exciting, but it's very important, believe me, so I.
Agree, Wilson.
Yeah.
It's sobering.
Sobering, yeah. I totally agree, you know, putting off three projects, it's fine, but I agree with Ken also, what we have coming into this city with development that's on the books already, and, and I'm confident a new hotel here. New hotel shortly. This is, this is really going to help our finances, so we'll have more exciting things to say in the near future. Any, any more discussion or action on this? Is there a resolution for adoption?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Please, Mayor Arbara.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item ten C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Sacramento Builders for the senior center deck replacement project in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars, approving a construction contingency and project management cost of thirty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars and appropriating four, forty thousand dollars from the senior citizens trust fund and seventy-one-thousand-six-fourty-six from the general fund capital reserve to cover the total project cost of one-ninety-nine-seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Carrie?
People like to stand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I stand corrected, I'm back.
You're back, right.
This evening, I'd like to talk to you with you about the deck project. The exterior deck along the back of the senior center is original to the building's construction and is approximately thirty-one years old. The deck is an integral outdoor extension of the senior center and provides a gathering space in a comfortable and very inviting natural environment. It is used routinely by senior center patrons and guests. Constructed of redwood planks and nails, it has outlived its useful life and requires significant routine and ongoing maintenance. Through the input of the senior citizen advisory board and the city's facilities maintenance division, composite decking material was selected as the preferred material due to its durability, ease of maintenance, and the environmentally sustainable nature of the material. The city commenced the required public bidding process. Based on the bids received, the total forebid cost ranged from approximately a hundred-and-sixty-thousand to a hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars. The two highest bids were in, were within twenty-seven-hundred dollars of one another, and the second and third bids were within sixty-two-hundred dollars. Staff believes the lowest bid of a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars from Sacramento Builders is a good bid and that the city will not be able to obtain the same cost if it, if it were to reject and rebid the project. Sacramento Builders has thirty-five years of experience specializing in the design and installation of decks and custom fences, whereas the others are general contractors. Sacramento Builders has completed numerous private deck projects, received satisfactory references, and holds a Trex Pro Platinum certification, which is reserved for the top one-hundred percent of the installers internationally.
One percent?
I'm so sorry, what did I say?
Hundred.
Oh, one percent. Thank you for the correction. With the fifteen percent project contingency, fifteen percent project contingency and staff management and expense, and inspection expenses, the total estimated construction phase will be a hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The fiscal year 2017, 2022 capital improvement program includes an appropriation of eighty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-four dollars. There is a difference of a hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Based on a comparison of the bid results with the engineer's estimate, the design engineer underestimated the removal of the existing handrail and installation of the new handrails and deck in their estimate, which resulted in the lower total cost estimate. To fund this difference, staff spoke with the nutrition site council representative to seek additional project funding, but was told funding for the deck project was not an eligible expense as it did not fall within the mandate, within its mandate, to support the nutrition, transportation, and information and referral program. Staff also met with the senior citizen advisory board to inquire whether or not the board would be willing to reallocate the forty thousand dollars previously earmarked to fund the senior center flooring. As the council is aware, funding for the floor replacement is no longer necessary now that its replacement is covered through the city's insurance. In a three-to-one vote, the board authorized the expenditure of up to forty thousand dollars from the trust fund if other funding was not available. With the current fund balance of a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars, expenditure of the forty thousand dollars for the deck replacement project would leave a balance of a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars in the senior citizen trust fund. Staff is seeking the city council's approval to award a construction contract for the deck replacement project to Sacramento Builders in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars, an authorized allocation of forty thousand dollars from the senior citizen trust fund, and seventy-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-six dollars from the general fund capital reserve. That concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions. And Jimmy Tan, our public works director, is here as well.
Questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Ken?
I did, I did send an email to the authors of the staff report, and, I mean, I guess my first question is, what if the engineer's estimate came in at a hundred-and-sixty thousand? Would the project move forward, or would you be able to do this type of financing through various accounts and, or would the project be delayed? My other issue is that with that type of project, a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, in my, in my experience, it wasn't about just replacing deck boards. I knew there had to be something else. So, the staff reports, I think, short of giving the city council the bid documents, they're going to have to be a little more detailed so that they can see that it's more than deck boards, it's more than refish, you know, replacing floors. It's whole new code-compliant railings now, you know, and whatever connections those are going to be. And possibly even throw in that there's going to be some structural repair, some dry rot repair, or something that was unforeseen. So, if the engineer, and, and my other question is, do we have someone on staff, this engineer, that knows this type of general contracting, you know, you know, process? You know, we may have engineering that, you know, I'm not looking at certain people, but we may have people on staff who know how to estimate pump stations, who know how to estimate, you know, you know, infrastructure projects or something. Do we have, you know, someone in staff that can estimate, you know, roof repairs and, you know, general, you know, construction? So, I'm, I don't want to sound like I'm scolding or anything, but I think it's a misrepresentation of, you know, this is the amount of money that needs to come, that we need to come up to do a project, when in fact, it's twice as much. So, fortunately, it's not a major capital project, and fortunately, you were able to find the funds to, you know, to move forward with it, but it just, you know, for us to make a decision, at least for me to make a decision, I just, I think that there was some inaccuracy, or at least some, some information that wasn't included.
To just quickly to answer the question, and thank you for joining us. With respect to the first question regarding what if the engineer's estimate had been a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, we would have made an evaluation of whether it would have been necessary and desirable to present the project to the city council for consideration of proceeding or amending the project before we bid it, or more likely, we would have bid the project and, and, and done essentially what we've done here tonight, which is to bring you the bids with the information as, as, as we have it. Unfortunately, in this case, and I'm going to ask our public works director to address the question more specifically about the in-house technical expertise, unfortunately, in this case, the design firm that does have the structural engineering expertise that frankly, our staff does not have, although Jimmy can speak more directly to the, to the details of, of that, did not adequately estimate the cost of, of the railing. In particular, it was the railing that was underestimated by a factor of a lot. In other words, the, I mean, I'm sorry, I can't do the math that quickly in my head, I should have done it before. Fifteen dollars a foot is what was estimated, the bid prices, all come in in a range that's closer to between a hundred and two hundred dollars a foot. So, that's a very, very substantial difference, and it changed the, the cost complexion of the project. But I'll ask Jimmy to speak more specifically to the in-house expertise of our staff, who did not make this engineer's estimate.
And I didn't, I didn't want to imply that it was our staff or anything, and, and which gets me to believe that we're, there are some specifications that you just implied that we, you know, we, we. to believe that there are some specifications that you just implied that we do hire to provide these documents, these bid documents. I guess part of my question now is, are we paying them to do estimates?
Yeah, in regards to the in-house technical expertise, and you're spot on, we are civil engineers, and we do a lot of pump stations, pipelines, and tanks, and so forth, but we don't have any expertise in building decks, or even the roofs. And we rely on the services of consultants, that's what we did for this project, and we rely on services of a structural engineer to provide us with the design as well as accurate cost estimate, but in this case, unfortunately, he underestimated a couple of the items here in his bid estimate. We went for it with what he had in here, and we believed that it was true to the fact that when he submitted to us, but I had to call him again to question him, what happened on this, and he hasn't gotten back to me as well. So, the bid schedule shows that, as the city manager indicated, fifteen dollars a foot for the Trex handrails, but it ranges from eight hundred all the way to about three hundred and thirty-six dollars, depending on which contractor puts the bids in here. So, it's unfortunate that it happened in this case.
Anything else? Marty?
The bids are bunched together. We need to get it done, and that's why we have this Capital Reserve Fund available to draw out of when we need to complete projects that aren't fully funded. We probably won't ever use that estimator again, I would guess, especially since they're not even calling you. But my only other thing here, since it is redwood, are we trying to recycle, repurpose this wood? I know there's outfits out there that take whatever condition it is, but just something to think about, that what are they going to do with that? If there's a lot of places that use that kind of wood for whatever fencing, or whatever. But I'm in support of it. We need to do it.
Rico, any comments?
Yeah, you can go out to bid and not have railing, but obviously, you're going to do the deck. The railing needs to be done, it needs to be done together, and this is the same deck when I remember we had the doors open back in August, many, many years ago. So, it is held up, and it is overdue, and needs to be done.
So, is that an introduction of the resolution?
I will go ahead and introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Barra?
Aye.
Mayor Ruiain?
Aye. The seniors have been looking forward to this for a long time, so I'm glad we're going to get it done. It's great. Item 10D, receive a report and provide direction on Posey Park Water Fountain Rehabilitation Project.
Great, thanks. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As part of the grade separation project completed several years ago, Posey Park was relocated adjacent to the new San Bruno Station location, and a new water feature was installed to enhance the station's environment. The water feature consists of a series of steps and pools that follows the elevation of the pedestrian ramp along Posey Park. Following completion of the grade separation project, several noticeable defects appeared in the water feature. Rust spots and concrete cracks are visible throughout the fountain's concrete area. In addition, the waterproofing lining for the fountain shows signs of bubbling and peeling that's exposing the concrete underneath. So, in an effort to reinstate the water feature, staff consulted with a coating contractor to develop appropriate specifications and contract documents to solicit bids to mitigate the defects. The Posey Park Fountain Rehabilitation Project design was completed in-house and was advertised in the San Mateo County's newspaper on September 20th and 27th. A non-mandatory pre-bid meeting was held and site visit also on October 5th, and six people attended the meeting. The contractors that attended the pre-bid meeting were mainly painting contractors and did not have experience with recoating the waterfront, which is a specialized type of application. And during a bid opening on October 19th, no contractors submitted any bids. Since the city didn't receive any bids, the Public Contract Code Section 2166 allows the city to approach contractors to request cost proposals and negotiate costs without having to rebid the project. The code section states, if no bids are received, the legislative body may have the project done without further complying with this chapter. Staff recontacted one contractor that assisted the city in providing the specifications to remove and reapply the waterproofing coating, determined their interest in working on the project. The contractor, coating specialties, was aware of the project but didn't bid due to other work commitments, but indicated they are interested in helping the city complete the project. Their total cost is estimated to be approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. One alternative besides reinstate in the waterfront is to convert it into a landscape feature. This consideration to install a landscape feature was discussed in June 2013 council meeting. And during the meeting, staff provided concepts from Caltrain, JPB, which included the fountain area replaced with planting. However, due to the shallow depth of the water feature, the planting would only be limited to ground cover and low height plants, and the water feature was selected to proceed. And tonight, staff is seeking council's direction whether to reinstate the water feature or convert it into a landscape area. Both alternatives have cost impacts. If the city council chooses to proceed with the recoating of the waterfront, the cost is estimated to be approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which includes the contractor's cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and fifteen percent for contingency for unforeseen conditions, and then fifteen thousand dollars for staff management inspection cost. For conversion to the landscape area, staff will need to procure services of a landscape architect to help design the drainage and irrigation system and select plant species. Once the contract documents are completed, the project will need to be bid to procure services of a contractor, and the estimated cost could range anywhere from forty to sixty thousand dollars for design, and it could be about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction. The difficulty is in the design of the drainage and irrigation systems, as there is already existing concrete at the water feature, and some may need to be removed to accommodate the installation of the drainage and irrigation pipes. The extent of the total construction cost is currently unknown until the design is completed. And both alternatives would have annual maintenance costs to the city, so the report tonight has no fiscal impact, and just seeking your direction, and staff will return to council in the future to award a contract based on council's direction tonight. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Rico, did you have a comment?
I had a question. Could you very briefly bring us up to date on the discussions and agreements with the JPB relative to warranty on the water structure, and did the warranty run out, or why shouldn't JPB be covering some of this? And I know you've negotiated and all that, but can you give us a little bit of a background?
Well, very briefly, I can refer to the city manager, but the JPB does not assume any responsibility for themselves or their subcontractors.
Right, exactly, right.
So, I can address a part of that, and then perhaps Jimmy can address the issue of the warranties. So, there was an agreement with the JPB, as a result of which, the JPB waived its claim for over a quarter of a million dollars for certain amounts that they had paid granted that they contended were the city's responsibility. The JPB also waived substantial numbers of hundreds of thousands of dollars in claims against the city that they had for the design and fabrication of the arch that the city determined was no longer going to be erected. In exchange for that, the city agreed to assume responsibility for Posey Park and for the water feature. So, by that time, the warranties that the builders, the JPB's builders had had either expired or were going to expire, and they were unwilling to participate in rehabilitating the coating of the fountain. That was an issue that we addressed with the JPB in our negotiations, and for a number of reasons, the city felt that it would be better if the city, if we wanted to do the work, that frankly, we should do it ourselves and be in control of it, rather than have the JPB hire their person who didn't do it right the first time be in control of the work. So, that was the calculation that was used in order to come to that arrangement.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff, suggestions? Marty?
Sure. I'm really concerned that we already have a poorly constructed product that has pipes in it. And how long before, after we pretty it all up and get it all coated and looking beautiful, then the pump doesn't work, the pipe is blocked, and we have to go through and jackhammer it all out? You already have an alternative. I'm interested in exploring that alternative. I know it may be a little troublesome with what is currently there, but I would like to see staff engage the landscaping architect, and while they're at it, I would like them to look at those nasty trees in the pots, and how they could beautify our downtown a little bit more than those trees that are suffering in those pots.
Thank you. Irene?
Well, it's no surprise. I have always wanted that to be landscaped, so I agree with Marty that it should be landscaped.
Ken?
I was just remembering what my reaction was when the design team actually presented us a Posey Park with a water feature, and I was taken aback, because all of a sudden, as pretty as the renderings looked, you're starting to think, well, what happens when the ribbon cutting is done and the trains are running, and who's going to take care of this? And we didn't even get to that point. I mean, it was inoperable, along with the ineffectiveness of trying to design and implement an arch the way the design team was, you know, over ten years ago was proposing. You bring up a great point. I mean, we don't know. We have no idea. We've having, I think we've taken care of the problem with the sump pumps, you know, in the street, so hopefully, those problems during a normal storm won't have a problem. But, yeah, I wouldn't trust the longevity of fountain pumps and piping. As much as it looked good for a time, for a short time, with water features, maybe it is, you know, a better, more predictable way to beautify that park with landscaping and possibly vines that will actually make it look a little more organic than a bunch of concrete walls. I just want to say that, sitting on the TA and the Transit Authority, and listening to these cities coming forward now with plans for grade separation, I sit back and I thank our lucky stars that we took care of it when we did. There are three cities that are planning grade separations, and the get-go is a five million dollars from the city. Some cities, I believe San Mateo is paying more. So, I'm not saying that this city didn't pay anything, but we got a lot for nothing. And I don't want to hear the use that you get what you pay for, but, you know, I think, I'm still very pleased with the product that we have and the transformation of that area. And we'll leave it up to the next council to decide whether, you know, what kind of landscaping or whatever, what they do with that. I'm for changing it if that's the pleasure of the council.
Rico?
I'm not sold yet, and the reason is, is that it's unknown cost. So, it's one thing to have a vision, whether it's a fountain or not. We're talking about what will it cost? And again, you may have to drills, you may have to jackhammer cement, you may have to redo the drainage. You're talking about having our personnel landscape in some very awkward positions, too. Not only on the ground level is fine, but as you get into the tiers. What I don't want to see is we say we want to landscape as we do median strips, and then it goes by the wayside. So, until I can have true costs, I mean, we know what it would cost for an annual maintaining the fountain. We don't know that for the landscaping. You would assume it should be less, but let's not assume. We don't know really what the overall cost would be to convert to something that's going to be usable and long-lasting. So, to me, if it was just my understanding, it wasn't the pipes, it wasn't the pumps, it was the plastering, which was not done well. And I believe that was the main item, to my knowledge, that needed to be done. So, again, until staff can come back with defined costs in annual maintenance, then I think it's not prudent for me to sit on a council and say, yeah, it sounds good, because we don't know what the end result is. So, right now, I know what fountain costs are, I don't know anything else on the landscaping.
I had the opportunity last year to walk that fountain with one of the contractors who told me what the problem was, which I knew already, and what to do to fix it properly. And there's a lot of footage there. I mean, if you walk it, I was really surprised how big that water feature is. And landscaping sounds great, but you're talking maintenance, and you're talking about not turning pumps on and off and water features, you're talking about manpower taking care of a lot of landscaping going forward. That's a concern that I have, and the piping there is not really conducive to landscaping, so it would have to be redesigned. So, I'd like to see a water feature back there, because I think it would work. Once you correct the problem that the contractors left, which is a lot of spalled concrete, which can be corrected, and efflorescence going forward, a good epoxy coating in there would solve the problem, and you'd have pretty much a maintenance-free situation. The pumps, we're looking at, Ken mentioned it, the grade separation was a huge multi, you know, hundred-something million dollar project. Hundred and fifty-seven million dollars, and what do we get for it? We have some relatively minor problems. We had some flooding problems with pumps that Caltrain took care of and are going to continue to take care of. We have a fountain that was done improperly. It's a relatively small part of the bigger pie, and I'd like to see going forward what we originally had envisioned by ourselves to, and Caltrain with the water feature. So, in the bigger picture, we've had some very, very minor problems and inconveniences in that grade separation, but what we received as a city and didn't have to pay for was extraordinary. Other cities are looking at hundreds of millions of dollars, they have no idea where that money's coming from. So, I'd like to go back to the water feature, but if it's the council's pleasure and it sounds like it, can you do a cursory review of what it would take in firing this up as a water feature and correct it properly, and then an idea of what it would take to actually do a landscape type of project? And I know it's going to take a little bit of money to get that evaluation done, but I think the council deserves that, whether it's this council or the council going forward, to make a conscious decision about what to do. Okay?
Can I add?
Yeah.
Jimmy, has there been an assessment of the fountain plumbing? The pump and all that? Is there a way to assess it? Do we?
We just shut it off because it was...
It was, I think it was because of the drought that we shut it off.
Right, exactly.
But, you know, one way is to turn it back on, and see whether the water starts spewing back out from the spouts. If it doesn't, then we'll have a problem, so. Again, I'm a civil engineer, and I don't do fountains, but we'll try it, try and get it to work.
You said you were pump people, though, right?
Oh, that's true, you're right.
Okay, do you have direction? Okay. Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase one portable stormwater and wastewater pump and trailer from Rockwell Engineering and Equipment Company, Inc., in the amount of sixty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Currently, the Public Works Department has one large pump which is used to respond to emergency situations related to sewer overflows and spills, as well as stormwater flooding events. The current pump is used by city crews to manage stormwater sewer overflows caused by things like collapsed or blocked service pipes or overwhelmed systems due to heavy rains. Its availability has helped in the reduction of the city's SSOs and has helped minimize the amount of... the amount of untreated sewage entering the stormwater system and into surrounding streets and property. Currently, the city does not have an equivalent large backup pump, and during a widespread storm event, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to find a rental pump, as San Bruno is often competing with other agencies to rent from the area's limited suppliers. The addition of a second large pump would allow the city crews to respond to multiple sanitary sewer overflows, emergency storm events, to minimize property damage and to clear roads and maintain access for emergency vehicles. The pump before the council tonight was approved as part of the 1617 equipment budget, and those funds were carried forward and included in the 201718 budget. And this pump is different and distinct from the pumps that are used by the Water Division as a sewer and stormwater pump cannot later be used for potable water operations, and I'm sure you can imagine why. Staff has evaluated either purchasing or renting an additional pump and determined that the purchase of a pump is the most cost-effective option to provide the ongoing reliable backup pumping capability that we need. We sent bid notices to several vendors, and we advertised on our website. We received three bids in June. The lowest bid of just over $40,000 did not meet our specifications and was rejected. The lowest bid that met our specifications was from Rockwell Equipment of Tustin, California, in the amount of $66,429. The bids we received were towards the end of the fiscal year 1617 budget year. A purchase order was set up late in June so that we could carry those funds over to the 1718 budget, so that funding would be available for the purchase of this pump. However, the PO was inadvertently sent to the vendor, and the vendor subsequently shipped the pump to the city without communicating or receiving approval for that shipment, and obviously before city council had approved that purchase. The pump, the pump is currently being stored and has been unused at the Public Works Corporation Yard pending council authorization. If the city council approves the purchase, the pump is available and ready for use right away, which is good because the rainy season starts, by my watch, probably tomorrow at about 6:00 PM. The 1617 equipment budget included an appropriation of $85,000 for the purchase of this pump. And as I said, the pump, those funds were included in the 1718 budget carryover. The cost of $66,429 will be split between the wastewater and the stormwater operating budgets, respectively. And our recommendation tonight is for the council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase one portable stormwater wastewater pump and trailer from Rockwell Engineering and Equipment in the amount of $66,429, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Jim? Well, we don't have to ask you how long it's going to take to get the pump, so that's, that's a good thing, right?
Yes.
Questions or action by the council? Marty?
So what was supposed to happen to go through the right channels of getting it from point A, from somebody's desk, to the vendor? And the, the second question is, what are we going to do to prevent this from happening in the future?
So I'll answer that question. What, what occurred in this situation with respect to the purchase order, and I think that's unfortunately where, where this particular and one-time situation originated. The purchase order was initiated in order to assure the encumbrance of the 1617 budgeted amount into the subsequent fiscal year 1718, the current, the current fiscal year, in order to assure that encumbrance and then that carry forward. What we will do about it is to make sure that the finance department, and the finance department has already revised their process in order that they will not issue a purchase order in order to accomplish the encumbrance for carry forward. So the fact that the purchase order was inadvertently delivered to the contractor, the vendor, who was expecting it because we had gone through a bid process and that vendor knew that they had been selected as low bidder, so receiving a purchase order was not apparently a big surprise to them. Could possibly have communicated, oh, we got the purchase order, we'll be delivering the pump on such and such, but that's not a required part of anybody's procedure, and we can't control those kinds of communications. But we can certainly control the issuance of a purchase order, and that's exactly what we're doing, again, in order to accomplish the, the issue that you've identified. I just would, would like to make sure that, make two comments in this regard. Number one, to remind the city council and the community that our auditors have consistently and, and as, as recently as last year with their audit, and again, we expect this year, have confirmed that the city's internal control procedures are both substantial and adequate. And secondly, to note that this one-time exception is not an indication that the city has, and it does not expose any type of material weakness in the city's internal control procedures. So again, I expect another, what we call, clean audit that will identify that, in fact, the city's internal control procedures are quite substantially adequate.
Rico?
And thank you for that explanation, city manager. And I know you said that the process is going to be updated. Is that in an SOP? Is that within some written document, or when you said there's going to be updated in regards to the finance on issuing that purchase order?
The process has already been updated, but we can, we'll make sure that we put that into a, a written format.
Okay. And my personal, maybe my colleagues, I'd like to see the, once it's refined and, and done, I'd just like to have it emailed to me, just for my knowledge and information, if that's possible, please. Thank you.
Anyone else? Or action? It's a resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor Abara.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Our final item is item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with ARG Construction Services, Inc., in the amount of $35,063 for transportation, assembly, and installation of the wood carving recovered from 324 Florida for display at the San Bruno City Hall, and authorizing acceptance of a donation in this amount from Recology San Bruno to cover the cost of this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. City council probably recalls that on, in October of 2014, the city council authorized myself and the city attorney to complete the purchase of the property at 324 Florida for the purpose of a future new park on the east side of our community. As the city council is also aware, during the demolition of the various structures on the site, the city needed to determine what to do with a magnificent piece of art that was part of the purchase of this unique property. I'll ask if you can show a picture. This, this piece of art was created by the master Swiss wood carver who constructed and resided in the property at 324 Florida during the early part of the previous century, the 1900s, in the early 1900s. Mr. Francois Perisot, a Swiss native, built the home and completed this masterful work of art. It is a nine-foot by 10-foot solid 3,000-pound Honduran mahogany carving depicting the independence of Switzerland. This piece was stored improperly during about three decades that the 324 Florida property was vacant, was stored in a shed, and was subjected to some amount of elements and insects and what-have-you vandalism, among other things, over the course of that very long period of storage. The city council on, in August of 2016 authorized a contract with ARG to complete basic conservation of the carving in order that the city might more responsibly and thoroughly consider what to do with it, whether to display it, or whether to consider eventually providing additional restoration of the, of the piece in order to either display it here in the city somewhere, or to perhaps find another loving home for it where it could be displayed properly by Swiss consulate or some, some other agency that might be interested. Although the intent of the work that ARG was contracted to provide, and again, that was to pick up and transport the tableau from 324 Florida, take it to its, its studio, and to perform basic cleanup and restoration, or conservation of the, of the, of the art piece, simply to be able to then wrap it up again, transport it back so it could be stored indefinitely without incurring any further damage. As a result of this basic restoration work that was contracted by the city, what actually happened is that the piece is, is so resilient that the limited conservation work actually brought the thing back to life. And it looks now much better than these slides depict. It is really, truly an outstanding, unique work of art. Anecdotally, this piece was displayed at the World's Fair in 1930, about 1934, 1935, on Treasure Island. And, and again, it has been displayed in, in other locations, including, I'm told, the predecessor to the DeYoung Museum. So it is truly an extraordinary art piece. Again, the conservation services allowed the restoration of the tableau to what we, with, I would say, relatively uneducated artistic opinions, but still, to the, to the casual observer, it restored the tableau to a display-quality piece. And in order to give it an opportunity to be used and enjoyed, staff has identified the opportunity to bring the tableau back to the city and to install it for display in the lobby of City Hall immediately, inside of the doors that are facing out towards El Camino Real. There is sufficient space, and we've done some evaluation of the building integrity and the means by which the tableau could be installed in that location. The primary issue, then, that we needed to address was the cost of the transport and the installation back to the city, should that be the interest of the city council. That cost, based on a contract proposal by ARG, is $35,063. Given that the city has already invested quite heavily in the work associated with preparing the 324 Florida site, purchasing it, preparing it for eventual transformation into a wonderful neighborhood park, and, and then ultimately constructing that park, not to mention the amounts that we have already paid to restore and, and treat the tableau. We proposed to Recology San Bruno that perhaps they might consider making a donation to the city in order to fund this last remaining piece of work that would bring the tableau back to San Bruno. As part of their community service spirit and their community investment, Recology San Bruno has graciously agreed to provide a donation in the amount of the contract that would allow us to make this final move of the tableau at no additional cost to the city. Should the city council wish to accept the donation and to proceed with the contract, we would certainly issue a more formal appreciation to Recology San Bruno, although I note that Kirsten Pinocchio, general manager, is here in the audience this evening, and she may wish to make some comments as well, but we would certainly acknowledge your presence and, and acknowledge with appreciation the donation that allows the city council to consider if you would like to proceed with this contract. Alternatives the, the city council has previously considered include, again, trying to find somebody who might like to display, to take ownership of the, of the tableau and to display it separately. This has proved somewhat difficult, potentially because, although we've, we've made a few outreach contacts, both the size, the bulk, the weight, and the previous condition of the tableau made that, while an interesting and not entirely desirable prospect for the folks that we contacted. Although we can certainly continue to do that either now or potentially in the future should the city decide at some future time that you no longer wish to display the tableau. Just referring to the picture that's on the screen, just to be clear, what we come back is the, is the back or the top piece would sit on top of the piece that's shown in the front. The original piece was further embellished with five cabinet doors on the base of the tableau that were intricately carved as well. Those were all vandalized and removed during the long storage period in the shed. So the proposal is to simply fill in those, those openings with a fabric cover. And certainly, should there be funds available or some other interested party in the future, though we have pictures of what those doors originally looked like, and they could potentially be recreated to restore the tableau to its, its full, original condition and beauty. In any case, I think we're very proud of, of the fact, although, although this is, has a, a unique but limited place in San Bruno's history. This is, this is not necessarily a town that has a huge Swiss national population. It is truly such an extraordinary piece that we're recommending to you tonight that we take the opportunity to be able to enjoy it, display it, and relish a moment in the, in the city's long and glorious history. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I had the opportunity with a few of the council members to see it in storage, and it's truly extraordinary. So to have it in City Hall and have it on display is really going to allow people to appreciate what it is and its history. So to thank Recology again for all that you do, not just picking up mattresses in the street, but you're doing other things for us, too. So I really want to say thank you to Recology, to you, Kirsten, and, and all of your staff for everything you do for us. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other questions or action? This is, this is, this is a great way to close a meeting.
How soon would it be displayed?
Within 30 to 45 days.
Okay.
Great.
Very nice. Thank you, Recology.
Anyone else?
Oh, I would...
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I would like to suggest we also have some kind of, either a plaque or some kind of, something that would tell a little bit of the history and where it came from.
Absolutely. So I forgot to mention that our community development director, David Woultering, has already volunteered to provide the narrative for a piece, a sign that we would install in front of it, because obviously it, it has a very interesting story, and we would like visitors to our City Hall to be able to understand both why it's there and what it is.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Great.
Yes, you go ahead.
I'd like to adopt the resolution.
Vice Mayor Abara.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Eleven reported commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening. We had it earlier. Comments from council members?
meeting. We had it earlier, comments from council members. I just want to take this opportunity to say that, you know, there's been a lot of grief up and down California in the last number of months, but we still have an awful lot to be thankful for. So to everyone from the City Council, a very happy Thanksgiving next week. Anyone else?
Through the chair. With that said, I'd like to make a suggestion to not only the Police Department, but also the Citizens Crime Prevention. Maybe to, the next day after Thanksgiving, there's Black Fridays and shopping in town. Just to let our shoppers know that there's some bad people out there that could make their holidays less pleasant. And if we can give them, just get them to be aware that shopping and being aware of where they put their new goods and things, and so that they can get home and wrap those presents instead of discovering that they've been, the car's been broken into. So if we can do some public service announcements or some things in partnership with Tan Fran, that would be great.
Anyone else? Marty?
So this is the month of Movember. Movember. It's a organization that is, you can go to their website, Movember Foundation, and it encourages the growth of a mustache to signify men's health and to be involved with taking care of yourself. It started in two thousand and three in Australia, and it is now spread across the world. Over five hundred different, five hundred million people have participated in it, and they have funded one thousand, two hundred different projects during that time. So it's kind of a fun thing if you can grow it out a little bit, but there is also ways for women to be involved as well. So just wanted to encourage those that want to to go to the Movember Foundation.
Marty?
Anyone else? Irene?
I was going to say, I'm not growing a mustache, sorry.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
I do, I do have something else. I have several something elses. This is my day for epiphanies, I guess, and pulling together some of the things that have always puzzled me or bothered me, and making some comments. So I would like to make this as a suggestion to the new mayor, who's coming up, that in the new year, you appoint a subcommittee to review the codes and bylaws that outline the expected conduct of board and commission members, as well as our conduct and how we should interact with them, and then have that subcommittee bring back recommendations to the full council for review and adoption. I've had some experiences recently that is, there's been a lot of confusion and possibly Brown Act violations and things like that. So I think we, as the old council and the new council members, would do well to have that spelled out. So that's one. Number two, and this has always puzzled me from my very first election, so why are rules in who becomes vice mayor? So it's very confusing, and ultimately, often it ends up that the least experienced council member becomes vice mayor in their very first year. So I think we should ask the city attorney to review those, not that it should do anything for this time, but for the future, and have the city attorney come back with some suggestions about how to make it run a little more smoothly, or at least a little more clearly, about how our rules work for that, if that's concurrence with the council.
Anything else?
Yes, I have one more. I have something good. So, last, so are you, do you concur with that? Are you thinking about it, and we'll bring it back again?
This is Mayor Ruane's meeting.
Yeah. No, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to take a look at some of those things that are, they're fairly antiquated, so to bring them up to date is a good idea. Right.
Okay, thank you. So the good news is, last Thursday, I was at our CCG board meeting, City-County Association of Governments, and we approved the bike and pedestrian recommendations to fund San Bruno's request for three thousand eight hundred, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars for our Huntington-San Antonio Bicycle Corridor and La Mida Park Elementary Safe Routes to School project. And just so you know how great this is, there were twenty-one grant applications. Only five of them were accepted and funded, and we were number two. So that was really a fabulous.
Good work.
Kudos to staff. They did a fabulous job. In fact, at the meeting itself, San Bruno was called out, our staff was called out, and what a great job they did in the presentation.
Great.
So.
Anything else?
That's it, guys.
Anyone else?
I'm going to pass.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, this meeting is adjourned until November the twenty-eighth, right here.